Kane.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Finnegan. Poyer.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Gallivan.
Yeah.
Olson.
Here.
Okay. Are there any? E. Kirk's? Danny? Any E. Kirk's?
At this time, no, we do not have any comments.
Finnegan? Have any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the community engagement presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we have invited Paul Hanlon and Skylar White from Behind Your Base to talk to us a little bit about their services and community engagement. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Paul, if that's okay. And feel free to share your screen. You're, can you see us okay? We're at our tables here in the boardroom, and we've got you on two screens on either side of the room. So everyone's got a good, good visual here.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Again, my name is Paul Hanlon. I'm the managing director. Spent the last thirty-two years working with cities, counties, school districts, community colleges, buyer districts, library districts, hospital districts, mosquito abatement districts, all these public entities, and trying to build public support for public projects. My focus has been on trying to figure out what taxpayers want and whether it jides with what the public entity is trying to do. And with me today is Skylar. Skylar, you want to do a quick intro?
For having us. My name is Skylar White, and I lead our voter analytics and our digital engagement efforts. Have a degree in data science. I have a lot of campaign experience. And prior to this, I had a public opinion research firm.
Thank you. So, def by PowerPoint? Let me hear my slide deck. I just want to make sure everybody can see that. So, as mentioned, we work with lots of different types of public entities. In fact, last month and a half ago, we'd by thirty-third year of doing this. In the last five years alone, we've worked on forty-one successful tax-related referenda, including twenty-seven school district referenda for about three billion dollars in funding. About two-thirds of those projects passed with at least sixty percent support, some in the seventies. And as far as Illinois, in the last twelve years, we've worked with nineteen, we've been involved with nineteen successful referenda, including seven high school district referenda for about two billion dollars in funding. Sixteen of those were bond issues, three were limiting rate measures. All of our bond referenda have passed in the state of Illinois that we've been involved with. We've had one school district that had a limiting rate that did not pass, that has still not gotten their money. So, that's always a bummer. I often don't think about the ones that won. I think about the one that didn't win, and hopefully someday they will get across the finish line. As far as some of our clients, high school district clients, Mundaline High School District is a recent example in this last election cycle, passed a hundred-and-forty-nine million-dollar bond issue. Downers Grove Ninety-Nine, they have two high schools that were renovated. Main Township, they have three high schools that were renovated as a result of their bond issue. District Ninety-Nine, LaSalle Peru High School District, that one was a tough one. That was probably the, of all the measures that we involved with, one of the closest elections. But fortunately, it passed and renovated their beautiful historic high school. And then, in two thousand and ten, New Trier put a measure on the ballot that lost, I think it was sixty-five percent against. We were not involved with that. However, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, they approached us and said, hey, we lost last time. We want to do this, get this across finish line. Can you help? And so we went through our process and fortunately garnered strong voter support for that tax measure. As far as our services, there's all sorts of different public engagement, public opinion research services that we provide. As Skylar mentioned, we do a lot of voter analytics. I think that our secret sauce is in proposal development. So, I spent twenty-seven years under the umbrella of a public finance firm. I was a registered municipal advisor, similar to the investment banking firm that you use now. And I'm no longer under the umbrella of an investment bank, but I think the good thing is that I at least know how bond measures are structured and some of the financing techniques. And so it's helpful as we think about public engagement and public opinion research, having that knowledge. As far as lessons learned over the last thirty-plus years of working on a referenda, I think there's five very important issues to think about. First is that seventy percent of your electorate do not have a school-aged child. So when we think about proposals and we think about public engagement, we need to remember that a lot of these folks that are listening to you do not have a school-aged child. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect. I often say that when you go, this is important as what you ask for. And so the next upcoming elections that are possible are March of two thousand and twenty-six, the midterm, and then November of two thousand and twenty-six. After that would be the April two thousand and twenty-seven election. So, I think that successful referenda are both an art and a science. We lean heavy on the science part, do a lot of, we stress using public opinion research, helping you think about what could or what has an opportunity to pass or not. In fact, we think that referenda, if you do it right, are won before a yard sign ever goes up, before the election resolution is ever adopted. And again, that's all based on engaging the taxpayer in making sure it's the community's plan and not just the board's plan or superintendent's plan or the architect's plan. And then, lastly, our, our mission is to help you pass a referenda, but it's really focused on building long-term trust with taxpayers. So, it's not easy to pass a referendum, but it can be done. And, but we think that it's, it's better that it, it pass handily versus a squeaker. So, as, as I mentioned before, a lot of the measures that we have been involved with have passed with in a sixty's or seventy percent support, which indicates that we think did a good job of engaging the taxpayer in making it the community's plan. So, again, as mentioned, there are kind of three election cycles that are coming up that you have, that you could potentially be on either, any of these ballots. And so there's a number of things to think about in deciding when to be on the ballot. So here, some of the key drivers, voter demographics, perceived urgency, trust of institution, competing tax measures, board elections, external factors, any remaining homework you have, and then public opinion research. And the, the first item is, we think, super important. So I'm going to let Skylar tackle the next few slides with regard to voter demographics. And I'll, Skylar, I'll just move the slide deck forward as you, as you like.
There are some real different outcomes for Illinois school district referenda based on which election cycle they choose to be on the ballot on. And party affiliation and age have the most difference in terms of who supports referenda. The trends in support levels for referenda by party are very consistent. No matter what part of the state or state that you live in, you typically get a lot of support from Democrats who are hugely supportive of public education. So, one of the most important decisions when it comes to timing is to time the, the adoption of the election resolution for a ballot where you'll have a high percent of Democrats and unaffiliated is turning out. Next slide, please. Here's a map of the district, and the district has, as far as registered voters, thirty-two percent Democrat, twenty-two percent Republican, and forty-six percent unaffiliated. And about forty, fifty-four thousand, that's for about fifty-four thousand total registered voters in about thirty-one thousand households. And voter analytics is really about the, is really about the analysis of looking at historical elections to anticipate what the turnout will look like for upcoming election cycles. And so we look at past election cycles because people are creatures of habit in, in when they vote. Turnouts are significantly different, as you can see on the bottom, in terms of overall number of voters who come out in each election cycle. The highest number would be in a, in a presidential cycle, like the November twenty-twenty or November twenty-twenty-four cycle. And on the far right here, we have November twenty-twenty-two listed because that's the best proxy for what the voter demographics will look like in November twenty-twenty-six. And we have the June twenty-twenty-two midterm primary here as an example of what to expect in a March election. And twenty-twenty-two, it just so happened to be in June that year. But that's what we'd use to proxy for a March twenty-twenty-six election. And April twenty-twenty-three here would be the latest consolidated that we'd want to take into consideration, thinking about an April twenty-twenty-seven election. And based on the support, based on the, the, the support levels that we showed in that previous slide that are pretty consistent within party affiliation, we see basically about the same chances on the balance of party affiliation turnout when it comes to November versus March versus an April twenty-twenty-seven election. Next slide, please. And younger voters, like I mentioned, are the second most important thing to consider when deciding when to place a referendum on the ballot because younger people are generally more supportive because they get more use out of the district. But older people show up to vote more often, so we want to try to time the election for a younger, more liberal electorate. And here, in this example, we can see that the gray bars are typically yes votes, while the pink and orangeish-red ones are typical no votes. And you can see that the younger demographics are certainly more supportive. And we have a little bit less support among the fifty-five to seventy-four age group who are really looking to retire. They've already put their kid through school, so they really get less personal benefit out of, out of any future improvements to the district. But at the seventy-five and older age group, we certainly see a bump because of a little bit of a grandparent effect. And so this is the same set of historical elections, looking at ages now. And looking on the far right side, I just want to point out that the margin, that, that the percentage of fifty-five and older or that tougher voter, voter demographic gets smaller, and the, and the electorate gets younger in a November cycle. So there's a slight advantage in terms of the baked-in levels of support that we'd expect based on age in this. And it's a little bit clearer in this line chart like Paul's showing right now, where it goes from seventy percent fifty-five and older in a, in a, in a consolidated municipal in, in an April election, seventy percent in a March midterm primary like we'd have March of next year. But the youngest electorate is in November. This is just showing the difference in the turnout, like I pointed out on the first party affiliation slide, and just the difference in the expected number of votes that you would need. It's a much smaller turnout, so you'd need about five thousand four hundred votes for a March election, about twelve thousand, about thirteen thousand for a November election, and the smallest number in an April twenty-twenty-seven election.
Thank you, Skylar. So, our process is broken into five key steps, five phases. First phase is plan development. Second phase is community outreach. Third is public opinion research. Fourth is our, what we call follow-up communications. And then, lastly, a citizen-led campaign. The first four phases can be paid for by the district. The last phase, phase five, the citizen-led campaign, is where a group of concerned citizens come together to advocate for the measure. You cannot use taxpayer dollars to advocate, and so that group is responsible for coming up with their own monies to spend on yard signs, door hangers, campaign website, all these great things that go into a strong campaign. Very important that your attorney review everything that is posted online, everything that gets mailed, all of your messaging through these first four phases, especially after the adoption of what we call the election resolution, where you're placing the measure on the ballot. Any communications after that, you especially have to make sure that that attorney is involved in reviewing everything. So, during plan development, one of the most important things to think about is what does your proposal look like? What, what could you potentially put on the ballot? And so, our rule of thumb is that you consider putting together both a Plan A and a Plan B. And the Plan A, we believe, is what you truly believe voters would support. So it's not a wish list. It's what you truly believe that voters would support. So, and then when we look at a Plan B, it's usually something stepped back from that. And in, let's say that you are doing a hundred-million-dollar proposal, for example. The Plan B can't be ninety-nine million. So you need to step back enough on that Plan B that when we do polling, we can test this Plan B, and it potentially could move the needle with regard to those who are swing voters. So those who are on the fence with regard to support. So, I, on our previous call with your team, we talked about, well, what are some of the things that you're thinking about addressing in your capital improvements? And so, in looking at those, I just want you to know that typically, those items that would pull the highest and garner the strongest support from taxpayers would be, one, safety and security, which is a big part of your proposal. Two, infrastructure mechanical. Again, there are a lot of infrastructure items that you're considering. Then there's ADA accessibility, pulls extremely well. And then, lastly, career tech ed spaces for high schools pull extremely well, especially, that is becoming actually more and more popular as we poll it. And then, these items on the right, it's not to say that these are the kind of things you can't do. Just know that they're not going to pull as well. So typically athletic-related items like, you know, fixing fields, gymnasiums, field houses, making locker room improvements, et cetera, just doesn't pull that well. There are districts that come to us and say, oh, no, it's, we're different. It, it's going to pull differently. We, we know. And then, we do the polling, it's the same. They just never really pull that well. Then surprisingly, art, drama, and music spaces typically don't pull. It's kind of medium. It's not, they don't pull poorly, just they don't pull as well. In fact, sometimes when we have tested art combined with CTE spaces, it doesn't pull as well compared to when you just pull CTE spaces, when it was split the sample. So, you just have to be careful of how you, of how, how you lump all these projects together. And then, lastly, cafeterias, again, they don't, they're not a clunker, but they just, they don't pull that well. So, again, you can't, you know, it's not that you can't do these things. It's just that these would not be the first things that you're promoting when you're out informing the public. Another important thing that we work on is wordsmithing. Basically, what's your core message? And typically, it's what's, it's, what's the problem? What's the solution? What's the cost, including the tax impact? What's the urgency? And then, lastly, what's the value added? And that value added is super important, as mentioned before, because seventy percent of your electorate don't have a school-aged child. So, we need to figure out what's, what's in it for them. So, then the next item would be working with your architect in assembling any supporting information to try to bring the project to life, including taking photographs of deteriorating boilers and roofs that are, that need repairs, et cetera. It doesn't sound exciting, but actually, in the mind of the voter, it is exciting because voters want to protect what they are doing. Next item would be to develop a preliminary ballot question. So ballot questions are developed by, not your, not your typical attorney that you go to for day-to-day things. It's, it's, your bond counsel would develop that. And so we do a lot of, we spend a lot of time working with bond counsel to think about what these ballot questions look like. And then, lastly, in this plan development phase, would be to put together a citizen task force. So these are typically business leaders, civic leaders, faith-based leaders, parents, non-parents, seniors, realtors, typically not elected officials, but you could have persons like village managers. You could have either current teachers or maybe retired teachers. Sometimes you'll have principals participate. And the big question that we ask the group to answer is what should the district share and test? And when I say test, I mean poll, district-wide. So that's their mission. They meet multiple times, they hear about your needs, they hear about the proposed solutions, they hear about the cost, they hear about the tax impact. And they help you, the board, to figure out what actually should be shared and tested when you launch into your public engagement process. So plan development is really about doing your homework. And then, the second phase, community outreach, is about sharing that homework with the taxpayer. And it takes many forms. So, people still read, kind of. And so it's important that when we do any kind of informational mailers, that we're also doing infographics and, and charts. And this one was for Indian Prairie School District. You could see, because chart on the right-hand side were all the different schools and all the different capital improvements they were going to do. You really need to, these days, kind of bring to life for that taxpayer what you're trying to do and what, what the anticipated benefits are, and obviously what the cost is, tax impact. Skylar, I'll let you talk a little bit about kind of informational videos that are done.
We really live in a video-driven world. We, as a country, watch more hours of, of TV and videos than any other country on the planet. And so, videos are probably the most important tool for communicating with that seventy percent of the district's registered voters that Paul mentioned in the beginning, who aren't parents, and delivering a compelling message to them in a concise format in the, the frame of time that they're willing to, to spend their attention on. And the thing that's really cool about videos these days is with all the cord-cutting technologies that we have, like CTVs, YouTube, Roku, Apple TV, you name it. There's just such a broad reach, and videos have the power of TV commercials, basically, when, when, when we put them out. Next slide. And the targeting ability and the low-cost nature of these videos and digital ads means that we can reach ninety-five percent of registered voters with, and have just a, just a really broad reach that increases awareness. It, it, it gets people to visit the district's websites, landing page with all of the details, and it really boosts participation in our surveys as well. So, it's really important to think about all these digital tools in our toolkit in addition to mailing and being able to text voters or hold community meetings and that one-to-one interaction.
Thank you. And again, rely heavily on social media posts. We do assist you with those as well. You would have a designated landing page on your website where you would have these videos. You'd have a detailed FAQ that you'd continue to update as you receive more questions. You would have all your mailers that are done, that would be posted here, any other information that you think would be helpful to the taxpayer. So you do your homework, share with the community, and then, lastly, you ask that taxpayer, what do you think? And most importantly, would you pay for it? And so, no matter what size school district we work with, we almost always do what we call a mail online survey. And this survey is sent to every registered voter household. In, in your case, thirty thousand six hundred and twenty-six registered voter households. It includes a QR code. Kind of see it right there. If they, if they would like to take the survey online. And then usually about ten days after we've confirmed that these surveys have hit mailboxes, we send out a text message to those voters who've identified with a cell phone number, who are registered to vote. And in your case, we've identified twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five voters who have a cell phone number we would send a text message to, prompting them to, promoting them to participate in the survey. And there would be an online link to that survey, as well as a link to a fact sheet that they could review. We could do this both in English and Spanish. We work with districts where there are other languages that they would like the survey to be in. And we could do that as well if you tell us what those other languages are that you'd like to see. And then, for larger districts, sometimes we will work with a polling firm out of DC. The name of the firm is Public Opinion Strategies. Saying, this is, for example, with Indian Prairie School District, they did a, both a mail online survey, followed by a, what we call a scientific multi-modal phone poll. In the olden days, it was just a phone poll because in the olden days, people actually answered their phone, their landline. These days, it's becoming more and more difficult. So these, these phone polls are still about half, half-phone, but then we all, they also do text messages and then sometimes email as well. The goal is to do a total of three hundred completes. And the difference between the mail online survey and this phone poll is with the phone poll, it's a random stratified sample of likely voters. So they're not targeting every single voter like we do with the mail online survey. They're targeting a sampling of those voters. They're trying to exactly match the demographics of They're targeting a sampling of those voters. They're trying to exactly match the demographics of whatever. Election you're trying to target. So in this case, if you're going for November twenty twenty-six. They would try to survey folks who are going to participate in that November twenty twenty-six election. And they know who they are because we have historical voting data. But then they also try to exactly match the demographics. So it was twenty-five percent female. Kind of good on the list of gender, party affiliation, age, et cetera, there and and location. Geography, they're trying to exactly match those demographics. It's called what we call perfect replacement. So the reason we poll, as most of you know, is that we're able to test, uh, parts of the package. So as mentioned before, we said that some things poll well, some don't. Oh, we would. We would actually test those items in the poll. We would test arguments for and against the proposal. So we're trying to recreate what folks might hear during the campaign. Which is helpful. And then we test not just overall support, but then support across demographics, whether it's age. Whether we would look at do district employees support it? Uh, if you have a child in the school, do they support it? If you don't have a child, do they support it, et cetera? Uh, and again, as mentioned, support by location. And then lastly. You can test both a plan A in a plan B. So before I mentioned that, hey, you guys should come up with a plan A that you truly believe voters would support. And then a plan B that is backed down a bit. And the reality is that when we do this, we typically don't talk about the plan B until the poll. And so in this case, we're looking at Downers Grove ninety-nine and they s- they split the sample. So half the voters that they polled heard a thir- hundred and thirty-six million dollar. Transit, uh, issue. And then the others heard an eighty-two million dollar issue. When you look at the results. They're almost identical. So in the end, they decided that they would pursue the hundred and thirty-six point six million dollar measure, which. Uh, ended up passing handily. And then lastly, we bring all this data back to the board. For your review in terms of the public opinion research. And then we had talked about that citizen task force. Uh, they had they would have made recommendations to the superintendent. And she would also be looking at input that she received as part of ongoing outreach, et cetera. And then making a recommendation to the board. Oftentimes, the ballot question will be refined after you learn more about what the voter, what the taxpayer wants. Um, in this case, we're looking at, again, um, Indian Prairie's ballot question. And fortunately, with a with a, um. A bond referendum question, they're actually, even though that looks kind of daunting, it's actually a fairly short compared to, um. A limiting rate or some of these other ballot questions. And so when you look at this one. And you start to look at the use of proceeds, it was basically security improvements. Uh, replacing roofing, mechanical plumbing, updating classrooms, enhancing energy efficiency. We didn't just kind of make that stuff up. As far as the order, the order came exactly from what the taxpayer told us they cared about, uh, in in the public opinion research. So after the board hears what the taxpayer does or does not want, then obviously you have to. As elected officials, you've got to make that decision, go or no go. And if it's a go, is it is the proposal something that you tested or is it something modified based on what the polling indicated? But the district's job does not end there in terms of communicating with the taxpayer. So. After the adoption of the election resolution, again, coordinating with your attorney to make sure that everything that goes out is proper. Typically, our clients would do follow up mailers. Earn media. So basically, press releases. Let's you'd update your website with the latest and greatest information. Uh, you'd continue to make presentations if you were doing, um, high school tours, having people come to the high school and tour the facility. Presentations, email, updates, et cetera. There's just a lot you still can do after the adoption of the question. The key is you can't say vote yes. You can't. You can't advocate for it. It's got to be strictly information that you're sharing. And again, your attorney will make sure that you're doing that. Here's just an example of voter information pieces again that Indian Prairie sent out. In this case, they're. They're highlighting what the ballot question looks like. Where can you vote? Again, they're reminding folks here that here are the school improvements, et cetera. And then lastly. Again, as mentioned, a group of concerned citizens come together, raise their own money. To buy yard signs and to do mailers and to do door hangers and to do a campaign website, et cetera. So all the kind of things on the right hand side that typically go into a great campaign. And so the other thing that you want your attorney to do is to educate the board. As well as district staff about what you can and can't do. And there's actually a lot that. That, um, board members can do and that staff can do when it comes to a campaign. It's just that you can't use taxpayer dollars. To advocate. So can you put a yard sign out? Of course. Uh, freedom of speech. Um, can you be involved in the campaign committee at night on your off time? Absolutely. So again, we just got to make sure that you know what you can and can't do and you never cross the line. So basically, in the end, it's, as I mentioned before. It can't just be the board's plan. It can't just be the superintendent's. Can't be the the, uh. Architects' plan. It truly needs to be the community's plan if you want to get, as we. Show in the beginning, kind of into these sixty or seventy percent support levels where which indicates that people are truly on board with your plan. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
A quick question for the, uh, community task force. About how much money would they need? Do you recommend raising? For the yard signs and things like that?
Yeah, we could. I mean, we would develop. We could develop a bunch of it in front of me right now. It's usually like a dollar, like a dollar, you know, a dollar and a quarter, a dollar for a dollar household. But again, it's. You know, it's based on the number of voters. So we'd have to, we'd have to do the math.
Just to clarify, was your question about what the campaign committee might raise independently? Or was it about the, um, assistant task force that would vet the proposal? That the district has put together prior to the adoption of the ballot question?
The community task or the, um. The last group, the campaign group, yeah.
Yeah, no, we we would be able to do that for you, but I don't have it in front of me now.
I wonder would, um, there need to be a pack or anything like that set up?
Yep. So you would, you would, um, you would form, uh, well, so I say you. So a group of concerned citizens, it's usually, uh. A few super moms, a few super dads. Franklin, some seniors and they, if you raise more than five thousand dollars. This committee, then they have to report to the board of elections. So there's always rules with regard to forming the committee. And reporting any incoming revenues, outgoing expenditures, et cetera. And again, it's, you know, separate from the board, separate from the district. You know, they're they're meeting not not at not at the school district. They're it's their own group and. Again, if staff or board members want to participate in that committee, they they do so, but they do so not on district time.
And how would that be initiated if a group, you know, would people not the board contact people to initiate it or?
So one thing I would mention is that when I talked about a citizen task force. What the citizen task force is not is a campaign committee. So, um, when the task force meets, again, business leaders, civic leaders, faith based leaders and others come together. The first thing I say to them is, hey, guys, you are not a campaign committee. You are here to vet this proposal to help the board think about what should be shared and tested with the community. Um, and then I say, but if in the in the future you want to advocate for it, great, but that's not why you're here. And the reality is that sometimes some of those folks who are part of that task force say, hey, I really want to be, I want to get this across the finish line. And so they will raise the hand and say, hey, I'm going to, we're going to put together a campaign committee, um, to advocate for the measure. So. It's a little more organic than going out and asking votes specifically, hey, can you? Can you form a committee to advocate for the measure? Just have to be super careful about it.
Paul, can you go back to the the like A and B plans? We're talking about in the polling, you know, can you go back to that slide and just talk through that one more time?
Sure.
Thanks.
So. The good news is that you have debt that's rolling off. Is that is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Reminding myself. Um, so. As a, you know, Skylar had mentioned that, um, hey, you should time an election when there's lots of Democrats and lots of younger voters, et cetera. If you can time an election when you're paying off long term debt. Such that you can structure this financing without a tax rate increase. That's more powerful than anything. So even if it was a community that was highly fiscally conservative, older, et cetera. Which we definitely work with. If you have debt that's going to expire and you can. And you can pitch a no tax rate increase, keep that 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 mill levy constant. It's powerful. And so that's what I think is most exciting about. What your plans are, if you can. Temper the ask to make sure that you can keep that mill levy constant. Then your plan A is probably going to be that. And you may not even have a plan B because that plan A is so positive as a result of no tax rate increase. Now, some districts have pitched a tax reduction. So, you know, maybe that plan B is is that. But, um, I think you're, I think you're in a really good spot financially. And as far as as far as public engagement. If you can size it such that there's simply no tax rate increase. We just worked with, um, a school district in Colorado where they did had a seven hundred and forty million dollar bond issued. Bond referendum that, um. Passed in the seventies and it was because there was no tax rate increase. And so, again, yours is not seven hundred million, but, um, it's still, you know, I assume a sizable ask. And, you know, the beauty is that if you can structure it properly without a tax rate increase, it's going to be pretty powerful. As far as I had mentioned, some of the things that polled well, don't poll well, well. Again, it's not to say you can't. Fix up your locker room. You can't, you know, you can fix up your locker room. You can, you can replace the outdated. Uh, scoreboards. You can't all these things that I read about that you wanted to do. You can do them. It's just that it's not the first thing out of the chute that you're going to talk about. You're going to talk about what really matters to those parents and even the non-parents, which is safety and security, infrastructure, accessibility, CTE. They're all really positive things that that people. Like to see school districts addressing.
So on that note, would you maybe, uh, suggest that if we were had a budget later down the road, we'd cover some of these areas? Would that be? Acceptable, do you think?
So do you mean address them with non referendums?
I'm not sure. I mean, just to bring it up, um, would there be a time to bring it up or would we want to bring it up? That if we were had a budget, we might be in some of these other categories. These would be the categories that we'd allocate leftover funds to.
I guess I'd say that, uh. If you're going to do a referendum. In a perfect world. It would be focused on safety and security, infrastructure, accessibility, CTE, all these things that poll well. And if you wanted to use non referendum dollars to address cafeteria. Athletics, et cetera. Probably a good thing. But again, as I'm, as I mentioned, as long as you're not. As long as you're sizing the referendum such that there's no tax rate increase. I think you're in a, I think you're in a really good position. As soon as you start to get in, as soon as you start to. Size the referenda such that it's going to require a tax rate increase. That where that's where it obviously becomes a little, you know, you've got to still make, you know, make a really good case. We've had clients where they had debt rolling off, but they just had a lot of projects they needed to do. So we, we talked about the net tax rate increase. So there was an increase, but there was also debt being paid off. So they, the net amount is what we talked about. That actually has happened a number of times. Still a pretty powerful message if you can talk about all these great improvements and not have to dramatically increase taxes.
And the, just to add, just given the fact that you can address all of those things identified in your facilities. Audit assessment without any tax rate increase as communications consultants, our advice would be that. The voters would likely support all of those projects.
Sometimes, sometimes superintendents and board presidents come to me. And they say, there's nothing sexy about our proposal. I'm like, what does that mean? Well, we don't have any like new stuff. There is, we don't have any like big giant additions. We don't have any new schools. I'm like, good. Because people don't, you know, that that's what they're scared of. People want to protect what they already own. So when they see things like roofs and infrastructure and replacing old boilers, they're like, good. That's please, yes, please, you know, please protect what I already own. That's what they find sexy.
I think that's one of my, um. I guess concerns since I was on the board, I've been on the board for twenty years. I was on the board when we passed the last referendum. And I look at some of these things and we're talking about doing bathrooms again, but we did them the last time. But I have to remind myself, it's been twenty years. So just like in my own home, I've had to replace bathrooms after twenty years. So. You know, when you got two thousand students at each school using these bathrooms. It's not surprising that they need to be fixed and upgraded again and all the rest. So I think that's part, you know, in my mind is. Just figure, it's not sexy, but it's the reality. And I think most taxpayers can understand that.
Paul, can you talk a little bit to about the the timing? We go back to that, uh, related to the benefits of spring twenty-six versus November twenty-six. I think I might, our, the way that we think we understand is that November twenty-six is the best scenario. Spring twenty-six would be like second choice and the last, the last would be the the odd year. Uh, election. Is that the way within that, um, that you've explained it? Can you talk a little bit more about that, why that is, why the November is a better option?
Sure. So we saw that with the March twenty twenty-six election cycle. That you have a. So we saw that with the March 2026 election cycle, that you have a, you have a slightly older electorate relative to the November 2026 election cycle. That's one of the biggest things. And the other thing would be just having the time to jump through all the hoops to do it properly. So putting together citizen task forces, having multiple meetings of the task forces, being able to then roll out your public information program, doing, having multiple presentations, having open houses, having people come and see the high schools, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly. And then finally, doing public opinion research, figure out if you have a chance or not. And if not, how do you modify the package? So it just takes time to kind of do it right, to let it, you know, let it breathe. And if we rush it, it's usually not a good thing. So that's, that's our main reason for November 2026. The other thing is that right now, it's chaos that we're seeing. So we are seeing, you know, the economy's, you know, fears of what's going to happen with the economy, fears about Social Security, they just go down the list. And so I'm hoping that the dust settles by November of 2026, such that people are, are, you know, confident in our economy, such that they would support your measure. But right now, there's just, there's chaos, and I'm worried about it. As far as the April, as far as the April 2027 election, again, it's going to be a much older electorate. It won't be radically different in terms of party affiliation, fewer votes needed. It's probably a backup in the event that November of 2026 was not successful. But I am confident that if you don't exceed the ask amount, such that you can, you can pitch a no tax rate increase, that you would have a very good chance in November of 2026, not having to worry about being on the April 2027 ballot.
One of the other variables is that in a smaller turnout election, like April or March, particularly in April, if for any reason there was an organized opposition to this measure, it's a little bit easier for them to make an impact with a limited number of resources in a smaller turnout election. And there's more insulation from that when you have three times as many voters in a November election.
I agree with that, yes. Good point.
Thank you. That's helpful. Certainly, a lot has changed in the world since, since we met just a few weeks ago. So thanks, that helps. Are there questions for Paula, for Skylar, anything that, more information that we'd like, anything related? We're good? Okay? Good? Okay.
I'll just add that the district has done a great job providing itself with this opportunity to address its needs with the financing opportunities that it has available to it. So you all should applaud yourselves for that, and we'd be really excited for the opportunity.
Deal.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being able to connect. I know we weren't able to do it in person, but we appreciate you making this date work. This was a convenient date for our board and our team, and we, you know, we'll be back in touch, if that's okay? Yeah? Are you sure any other questions? We're good? Okay? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
You too.
Okay, then you had on here a couple of agenda items. Is there some stuff we also need to add on there or address, or is that just in case?
No, that was just, yeah, in case there was a request for the board.
Okay. No more want to any public comments? Are there any comments related to this matter?
Good evening. At this time, we have not received any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting. So, Ms. Olson, I was going to say, you made the motion, Chris seconded, and on their side, I'll post an A. I have it, and the meeting is adjourned.